This evening, public comment on all items will be held under Section E Public Comment. If that includes agenda items and non-agenda items, if you have not already submitted a card and would like to speak on public comment, please submit a speaker card. And just a reminder that there's a tension between allowing as much public comment as possible and getting to our board of business before it gets really late at night so that people can actually engage and see the board meeting. So our practice has been to have public comment until 8:00 PM, which is usually roughly an hour, sometimes a little bit more than an hour of public comment, and then move on to board business. So that's gonna, I think we'll be fine today with the number of folks we have here, but just wanted to let folks know. We will have, we'll do the in-person public comment, and we'll have some time for online public comment as well. And there also are other ways to communicate with the Board of Education and superintendent and staff that are on our website, such as email and phone and so forth. So we will now move on to, oh, and another thing I'll say is I know some folks may be interested in the announcement that was made today. The superintendent's gonna address that in the, in his superintendent's report. So right now, we're gonna do the report from closed session, and then we'll move on to the rest of the meeting. So first, we have some student expulsion matters we need to vote on. I move approval of expulsion agreement for one middle school student, matter number 2024-202502, for the remainder of the current fall 2024 semester and the following spring 2025 semester through June 4th, 2025. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Wazim Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. I now move approval of the expulsion agreement for one high school student, matter number 2024-2025, number three, for one calendar year from the date of approval of the expulsion. During the expulsion period, the student will attend Civic Center. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Wazim Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
I now move approval of the expulsion agreement for one high school student, matter number 2024-25, number four, for the remainder of the current fall 2024 semester and the following spring 2025 semester through June 4th, 2025. Suspended expulsion status for the spring 2025 semester. During the enforcement of the expulsion period, the student will attend Civic Center. During the suspended expulsion period, student will attend a comprehensive or alternative high school from two student, two school options provided by SFUSD. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Wazim Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
I now move approval of the expulsion agreement for one high school student, matter number 2024-25, number five, for remainder of the current fall 2024 semester and the following spring 2025 semester through June 4th, 2025. Suspended expulsion status for the spring 2025 semester. During the fall enforcement expulsion period, student will attend a Care County program, and during the suspended expulsion period, student will attend a comprehensive high school from two student school options provided by SFUSD. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Wazim Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. I now move approval of expulsion agreement for one high school student, matter number 2024-25, number 06, for the remainder of the current fall 2024 semester and the following spring 2025 semester. Suspended expulsion status for the spring semester. During the enforcement expulsion period, student will attend a Care County program, and during the suspended expulsion period, student will attend a comprehensive or alternative high school from two school options provided by SFUSD. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Wazim Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. And finally, I move approval of the expulsion agreement for one high school student, matter number 2024-2507, for the remainder of the current fall 2024 semester and the following spring 2025 semester through June 4th, 2025. Suspended expulsion status for the spring 2025 semester. During the enforcement expulsion period, the student will attend Civic Center, and during the suspended expulsion period, student will attend a comprehensive or alternative high school from two school options provided by SFUSD. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Wazim Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. Now, I will complete the readout from the, from closed session. In the matter of student SP versus SFUSD OAH, case number 2024090177, the board by a vote of six ayes, one commissioner recusal, Commissioner Fisher, gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In the matter of student EF versus SFUSD OAH, case number 2024080756, the board by a vote of seven ayes gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. And in one matter of anticipated litigation, the board by a vote of seven ayes gives direction to the general counsel. I will now read our land acknowledgement. "We, the San Francisco Board of Education, acknowledge that we are on the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatis Alone, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. As the indigenous stewards of this land, in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatis Alone have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. As guests, we recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland. We wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatis community, and by affirming their sovereign rights as first peoples." Now, I'd like to move to the approval of Board minutes, item two, for the regular meeting of September 10th, 2024, and the regular meeting monitoring workshop of September 24th, 2024. May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any corrections to the minutes? If not, we will have a roll call vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Wazim Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Seven eyes. And I'm sorry, Student Delegate Montgomery on the minutes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we are gonna go to the superintendent's report. Dr. Wayne?
Thank you, President Alexander. Good evening, everyone. So you go to the next slide. Yeah, so this afternoon, I shared some information about some upcoming difficult decisions that we, we need to make. And these are decisions we need to make for, to, in order to support the students who we see here and all the students who we serve in the San Francisco Unified School District. And when we talk about these decisions, you know, I share about the fact that we're in a budget crisis, that our enrollment has declined, and that our resources are stretched too thin. But in the end, what that means is that we can't provide the educational opportunities our students deserve. And so we've been going through this process called resource alignment to determine how to best use our resources to support our students. And we've reached a point in the process where we need to be very clear and transparent about what our future looks like in San Francisco Unified. We want to maintain local control, and we want to ensure that we have a balanced budget and that we are not continuing to deficit spend. And again, we want to do that not just because we want to avoid a state takeover, but because we want to make sure that we're able to make the decisions for our students in this district. And in order to do that, we're gonna need to talk over the next several months about the, you know, reductions that are gonna impact all of our schools, but particularly our schools that have lower enrollment and that are most vulnerable to these impacts. And so for that reason, we shared earlier today which of those schools face that potential impact, and that these are schools that meet our criteria for closure or merger. And we shared this, the schools that meet this criteria, and our initial thinking about what the future of these schools might look like. And I say our initial thinking because we know, on the one hand, there's a lot of questions about what the district is planning. We wanted to share the kind of thinking that, that has taken place so far. And on the other hand, we know that if we're talking about the futures of our schools, we need to talk to the school communities. And there are school communities here who have said, "Come out and talk to us about what is, what you're thinking, what is happening, and learn from us what our students' experiences are and what we need." And so we are going to have those conversations. We'll have a district-wide conversation on Thursday night, a town hall. It'll be a virtual town hall. We will be able to take questions, but the real engagement will happen at the school sites and at the possibly impacted school sites. And so starting next week, I will be coming out to schools to meet with staff and families and to have these conversations. And that's going to inform any final recommendation that we make to the Board of Education on November 12th for them to take action on December 10th. And again, these are difficult decisions, but they're necessary ones for us to set our students up for success in the future. I know there's gonna be a lot of different opinions about what, you know, what those decisions should be and how we execute them, and that's what we're inviting people to share over the next month as we have these conversations. And no, though, it is to then center our students. So with that being said, if, if you want more information, if you go to the next slide, we're continually updating information on our website around our resource alignment initiative, and right now is particularly focused on the question of closures and mergers. But we have a lot of budget questions that are going to be coming up as we prepare our fiscal stabilization plan that also needs to come forward in December, that will, again, demonstrate what, as a district, we are, we are facing. And then, if you go to the next slide, you know, I, you know, heard the desire for more, you know, clear communication, more frequent communication, so I've started sending video messages on Monday, and we'll continue to send those and look, and look for those. And so I know, want to appreciate the leadership of the Board of Education. Ultimately, when I say we have difficult decisions to make, it's my job to bring recommendations and to engage with the community and think through what's going to be best, but ultimately it's your job to approve how we're going to move forward. And you're going to have difficult decisions to make come December, when our fiscal stabilization plan is presented to you, along with our recommendations for closures and mergers. And no, I want to, I want, I'll speak to you, but I want everybody listening to know, I understand that for you all as well, it's about putting our students at the center and thinking through what's best, even if we're making decisions that, that in the moment are going to mean some change or transitions for our students, doing it in a way that ultimately supports them and our families. Okay, just also, while there's, you know, difficult decisions we make, I always need to use this time to highlight the amazing things that are happening in our district. And if you go to the next slide, it's Filipino-American History Month in October, and we're making sure to recognize and celebrate the heritage of our students who are Filipino-American. And I just want to share, we, this, this weekend, there was a leadership forum held by the Asian-American Administrators Association, and the, we, and we're trying to get diverse administrators into our leader, onto our leadership team, and appreciated principals and assistant principals came out to speak, and the principal of Lowell shared her experience as a student at San Francisco, a Filipino student, and how the pride she has in her heritage and how that informs her leadership in our schools. And so just really appreciate we're a district where, that lifts up our students and our staff and our leaders and celebrates their heritage in our classrooms. We also are a district, if you go to the next slide. I think went back, yeah. We also are a district that provides a lot of school lunches to our students. We're, in fact, the largest provider of meals to school-aged youth in the city of San Francisco, and National School Lunch Week is coming. This is an opportunity just to appreciate our student nutrition services team, celebrate the, the healthy choices our students have. When I visit schools, I hear a lot from our students about our food, both how it needs to improve, but what I really appreciate is where we have put in kitchens, and we can make more fresh food, how much the students like it. I was talking with kids from an elementary school or going to middle school, we're sharing they heard from their brothers and sisters how the food at Presidio is just so much better now that they, we have, we can prepare fresh, prepared meals. And so there is a bond on our ballot, the bond on, on your ballot, that names the projects we're doing, and one of the projects that we would do with this bond is to be able to have a central kitchen to provide more of those fresh meals to our families. So that's National School Lunch Week. And then one final bright spot, if you can go to the next slide, though, and start the It's Custodial Appreciation Week, and we just want to celebrate our hard-working custodians who keep our schools clean and safe. Is it working? Nope. We got the infinity screen going. We'll give it one more try, otherwise we'll post it to our website, but it's nice to Okay. But just want to highlight, I mean, our custodians work incredibly hard. A bright spot this year is we, we were able to hire and staff our custodial team so they can, you know, actually focus on just their route and not having to do other people's jobs, and again, really appreciate their hard work. So with that, I'll conclude my reports and turn it back over to President Alexander.
Thank you, Superintendent Wayne. We are now at the point in the agenda for the Student Delegate's report, but it looks like, they just stepped out. Oh, okay, okay, thanks. So maybe we'll try to come back to that in a minute. All right. So we will go on to public comments. So, oh, no, no. Okay, he's not back. Never mind, sorry. Vice President Wazim Ward, who was trying to find him, I think. All right. So, okay, we will go on to public comment, so. There's one more, one more card than we had. So each speaker will have one minute, and public comment will, we will have an hour and five minutes approximately, a little more than that, till eight, we'll go to 8:00 PM, or no later than 8:00 PM. And we will start with in-person public comment, and then we will move to online public comment after that.
I'm gonna call individuals in groups of five, so when you hear your name, please line up at the podium. There's a little button there that you'll turn the microphone on. So first five are going to be Nicholas Macias, Miles Locker, Jamie Lang, Rachel Dean,
Okay. Hi. I'm Nicholas, the parent of a student at Harvey Milk Civil Rights Academy in the Castro. And I make this quick so that if people are gonna follow me, I think they'll see this school's pretty represented today. But the reaction I had immediately to the news today was that this process seems like it's designed just to shut down small schools. In fact, I, I think it's gonna show up in, you know, conversations here as we talk about the criteria that was put forward. If you break it down, it really just looks like we are talking about removing small schools. And I want to advocate for, a little bit for what it's like having, you know, that, that experience of like the small community school, it feels right-sized to where we are and being able to walk to the campus and have interesting programs with students that feel, you know, I guess what, the idea is that maybe these, these large campuses of like six, 100, 700 students aren't appropriate for every student in the city. And it feels like we need that diversity of experiences and different environments for different types of students. And if we're setting it up that we're getting rid of all these things, it's, it's gonna leave some people out, I think. Anyway, is that about a minute?
That's a minute.
Good evening. My name is Miles Locker. I am a parent at the Harvey Milk Civil Rights Academy. I implore you to reverse your proposed decision regarding closure of Harvey Milk. It is one of the most diverse schools in San Francisco in the district. It has a civil rights curriculum that is unmatched anywhere in the city, and I suspect anywhere in the nation. The education that the students get there, because of that civil rights curriculum, is unparalleled. It would be a travesty to shut that down. It would be a travesty to the Castro community. Harvey Milk is central to the Castro community, and you would be service to that community by proposing to shut that school down. It appears that you are biased against small schools. There are children in San Francisco who need a small school environment. You are gonna drive those kids out of the San Francisco School District. This is a dumb move strategy.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jamie Huling. I'm the mother of a second grader in the school district, and I noticed that with the unaudited financials today, that the bottom line is that our projections are not changing moving forward and that we're still in the same financial situation, even though we have higher revenues and lower costs than expected. I know there are so many families who are here today who are gonna be deeply affected by the decisions that this board is making, but I want to say that we all want to create an equal and equitable and excellent school district moving forward, and that I hope the board makes decisions that keep in mind the direction that we want to move, and especially knowing that we're going to move to a zone assignment system, that we protect schools in student-rich communities so that every child can realize the goal of going to a fully-funded school in their neighborhood. And I'm particularly concerned about the number of schools that are in districts 10 and 11, which already are under resourced, that are on the list. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Rachel. I'm a parent. Like its namesake, Harvey Milk Civil Rights Academy is a school that welcomes all and champions love over hate. In this political climate, it is extremely worrying that SFUSD would choose to take such a trailblazing school from the heart of the Castro community. I'm the parent of a trans-identifying third grader who attends Harvey Milk. Our school community is small and welcoming. It has provided a nourishing and loving environment that champions community and inclusivity. My oldest child is now in seventh grade, and they are non-binary. They also attended Harvey Milk. Over the years, Harvey Milk has embraced, embraced the evolutions and growth that my family has taken, and there have been a few. Our family was not once made to feel like we had to explain who we were or defend our choices. In a country where at times it's as if the walls are closing in, where our rights are being repackaged as luxurious choices, I'm appalled that shutting down a small and peaceful community is what you've come up with.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Beggs, and I'm a Harvey Milk parent here tonight to speak about how important our school is to us and to the San Francisco community. My daughter is thriving in school. She's reading and writing and doing math at very close to my personal level at this point. She's learning about civil rights through the school's unique civil rights curriculum. She recites Langston Hughes poems, and she's learned to love new foods through the school's incredible edible social studies program. She has never been bullied. What I want to express to the board is that it seems as though the recently released closure list is saying that school, small schools don't work for the district. However, small schools are working for our children and for my child in particular. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jamie Lang. I am the mother of a first grader at Harvey Milk. Harvey Milk is a very special place, and I feel like it's different from the other schools that are slated for closure. It's located in the heart of the Castro, and it's a safe place where some of the most vulnerable children in the country come to get an education. People from other states come to San Francisco just to enroll their children into the school. Closing Harvey Milk will not only displace an entire community and a culture, it will ca, it will be causing direct harm to many of the students. Our children who are LGBTQ are the most at risk and require this special place in our city. They deserve a safe place to learn and to grow, just like all the other kids. Do not close Harvey Milk and do not impose this harm on the children, on the most vulnerable children in the country of San Francisco. I urge you to stop balancing your budgets on the backs of our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am here, I noticed on your list, there's a lot of schools that have closures for schools that promote special education, and I was just here to vouch that, you know, are you gonna make sure that there's enough staff when the schools merge? And I ask you to reconsider which schools you're gonna close because that really matters to me, because my son is autistic, and it really matters for a lot of parents that need those services. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna call the next group. Clementiel, Hala Fatah, Helena Awad, Noara Fatah,
Hi, my name is Clementine. I'm a member of the Arab Resource and Organizing Center and an 11th grader at Ruth Asawa School of the Arts. At my school, following a cultural day, our vice principal included in his statement that, quote, "In a presentation about Palestinian culture, students with differing viewpoints and community identification were able to have a conversation that exhibited curiosity and a desire to find commonality." In effect, he was saying that a presentation about Palestinian culture was controversial, and people were able to have opinions about the mere existence of Palestinian traditions. This is a blatant demonstration of how some SFUSD administrators are calling into right, are calling into question the right of Palestine's culture to even exist in the minds of their students. All of this, combined with the fact that a year ago, SFUSD told teachers that they weren't allowed to even discuss what was happening with their students, makes school feel unsafe for me. While it is important for educators to be trained on how to protect their students from all forms of bigotry, SFUSD must understand that supporting a community experiencing genocide is not antisemitism. Thank you for your attention.
Is it on? Hi, my name is Hala. I'm a youth member of the Arab Resource and Organizing Center and go to Abraham Newton High School. In the past year, nothing about Gaza or Palestine has been mentioned at school, nor has there been any support from the district to the Arab and Muslim students. Being a Palestinian, I have had to watch my people be brutally bombed and killed, constantly worried about my family and what will happen to them. And having to continue to go on despite all this happening. During this, SF administration has neglected their Arab and Muslim communities, as well as Jewish students and allies. Also, you continue to ignore our calls and rules, and instead, SFUSD staff has reprimanded, interrogated, and harassed Arab and Muslim students, making it difficult and uncomfortable for us to be able to speak out. It shouldn't be a problem when all we are doing is calling for an end to the slaughter. Being in a pro-war, anti-Arab organization is so disrespectful to us, to my friends, and my family. This is shameful.
Thank you.
My name's Helena. I'm Palestinian. I'm the president of the Lowell Middle Eastern North African Club. I'm also the founder. I'm a current senior at Lowell. I'm here to talk about what you've kind of heard from some of the students, being silenced completely until not to talk about the genocide in class. How dare you tell me as a student, as a Palestinian student, that I and my teachers have no right to speak about an ongoing genocide that looked like me and my family? I face racism, I've witnessed interrogations and bullying by adults affiliated with SFUSD, and now you bring in this pro-war, pro-Israel organization to do antisemitism trainings after ignoring our year-long concerns and demands and hate crimes that have happened since last October and claim there's no bias? This is an organization that has platformed Benjamin Netanyahu and claims that their main goal is to advocate for Israel. There can be no bias. My experience is not just limited to me, but it's all of the Arab and Muslim students in SFUSD. My experience is not just limited to me, but it's all of the Arab and Muslim students in SFUSD. You are pushing us out. I would be more concerned about keeping your schools open than platforming a pro-Israel, pro-Israel organization. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Hello, my name is Nura and I'm a youth member of AROCK. As someone who still attends Abraham Lincoln High and currently has family and friends in SFUSD at every grade, elementary, middle, and high school, they have been experiencing discrimination for being Palestinian Muslim. We deserve more than what you have given us in this last year. My little sister, who is in seventh grade, had a teacher ask her why her people started this war. Now, how do you expect a 11-year-old girl to respond to that? We deserve more than to feel as though our voices and feelings don't matter. We deserve to be able to freely talk about our people and our country without having untruthful accusations made to us. Our families and students have been begging for the district to actually care for us. Palestinians, Arabs, and Muslims, SF communities have faced a lot in this last year and for this training to happen led by a pro-war, pro-genocide organization is just offensive, literally anti-humanizing. You guys should be doing better. Thank you.
My name is Kali. I'm a student at Baboa High School. We, the students, have been let down by SFUSD. Following our participation of the district-wide walkout on October 18th, 2023, my sister and I face extreme hate. Adults outside of SFUSD were targeting us with hate speech on school platforms. We were personally attacked, even called racisters and threatened with physical harms. Our administration was docked. Our secretary had to suffer through weeks and weeks of abusive hate speech calls. They even threatened us at homecoming. The district didn't know how to protect us. We asked for help. So much racism was documented, but SFUSD did nothing. To bring in a pro-war organization for PD after ignoring the documented threats, discrimination, and bullying that my peers and I reported is dehumanizing. Ethnic Studies teachers are qualified. Parseos is qualified. JVP is qualified. We don't need to bring in pro-war lobbyists to fight hate.
Thank you. I will call the next group. Jamie Huling, David Holland, Tiffany, Alexis Panzer, Joanna Lynn, Elaine Lartine.
Thank you. I'm David, parent of a kindergartner at Harvey Milk. I'm deeply, deeply concerned by the process and the metrics that were used to select this initial list. Something that has not been captured is the measurable values small schools bring to our community. They are a safe space for LGBTQ plus families, for bullied kids, for neurodivergent kids, and for many others that large schools simply cannot accommodate. One of your criterias was directly school size, less than 260 kids. This itself is problematic, is a problematic criteria that many of us here disagree with. But the real disservice to our students and families here is that your other criteria, the composite score, is nothing but another measure for school size. As we see here, schools, and I'm sorry this is small, but schools with 1,500-plus students scored incredibly well on your composite score, nearly an average of 80, whereas schools with less than 500 students scored below or just above 30.
Thank you. That's your one minute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, my name is Tiffany. I have two mixed-race children who are black and white. My husband and I picked Harvey Milk due to the diverse representation in the staff and students. We wanted a school that was small and focused on social justice and civil rights. Each grade has a set curriculum where they learn about civil rights leaders and historical figures. Example, our first grader is learning and reciting poems from Langston Hughes and many others. This unique curriculum teaches the students to be caring and supportive of all humans. We know that Sanchez has a bullying issue where children have transferred from Sanchez to attend Harvey Milk. This is a heartbreaking situation for those children having to go back to an environment where they were bullied. The staff, community, and families make Harvey Milk the phenomenal school that is and has been the school lottery, make Harvey Milk the phenomenal school that it is. And it has been the school lottery system that has caused the school to be under-enrolled.
Thank you.
My name is Alexis and my child is in second grade at Harvey Milk Civil Rights Academy. When we enrolled in Harvey Milk, we were mid-year refugees from private school. We decided on Milk initially as they were the only school that was responsive and came, was, come up with an actual plan for our IEP on the spot. Since then, the school has brought us so much more. I'm deeply concerned that we could lose our civil rights curriculum that really enables social emotional learning. It is unique to our school and could be a model for the district. I'm saddened that people who have chosen our school would lose small, for small school feel that they chose for their child for a reason. Our school was built to be small and we appeared to be targeted of that, because of that, even though the district said that small schools have a place in its portfolio. And I'm angered that what was a beacon for LGBTQ kids and families, for neurodivergent kids and kids who are seen as different may be erased and those kids that are prone to bullying will not be welcomed with open arms. We're ready to be fully enrolled. Families in the AAF fought to be enrolled. Please reconsider closing our community.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Joanna Lynn. I'm the parent of a second grader at Harvey Milk Civil Rights Academy. Two years ago, I did the opposite of what many parents of school-aged children do. I left the suburbs and moved to the city so my child could attend Harvey Milk. There are many wonderful schools in SFUSD, but Harvey Milk is singular. We are a safe haven for LGBTQ children and families. We teach our children to champion civil rights, to fight for social justice, and to build and show up for community every day. How will you ensure that our quote-unquote merger is a blending of distinct communities and cultures? How will you reconcile structural differences like our start times and our facilities? How will you ensure that our educators, the heart and soul of our community, are not pushed out in this process? We need you to show us that this merger is not a euphemism for closure and a de facto acquisition. Our campus is more of the district's literal best by your own scoring. Please do not squander the investment taxpayers made in our school. Please keep our school, our community, and what we stand for intact. Our families in our city need Harvey Milk Civil Rights Academy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Alan. I have a son with autism. And during the pandemic, my wife and I were in healthcare and we spent a lot of time working with COVID patients. And during that process, we were undergoing the exacting process of IEP for our son and trying to find where he'd fit in. We toured probably like a dozen schools and the only one that fit was Harvey Milk. And I just want to echo that this process seems like it's targeting smaller schools. And I would just urge this board to not sacrifice economics and efficiency for a quality and caring community that truly accepts all comers. Thank you.
Thank you. Tava, Jeff Morrison, Julie Roberts Fung, Stephanie, and Josh Friedman.
I'm Tara and a parent of students at Baboa High School. And I'm really concerned about the pattern of racism that SFUSD is demonstrating in its failure to respond to hate speech, bullying, racism to our Arab and Muslim students and students that are organizing for human rights in Palestine. We met in this room in November. It was a hard meeting. My students have been targeted on school platforms by hate speech. They've been threatened. Their administrator has been doxxed. And this body did not respond. Hate speech unchecked leads to hate crimes. And there's silence in the district about Palestinian perspectives and bringing in a pro-war group when you have an ethnic studies department
Thank you.
is not enough.
Thank you.
It's dehumanizing.
I'm Seth Morrison with Jewish Voice for Peace. We've had multiple complaints from Jewish teachers and Jewish parents about bringing in a pro-Israel organization to train our teachers. In response to that, we have arranged for a parseio, which is known for collective liberation training of teachers, to do an alternative training tomorrow afternoon at the same time. And we urge all teachers to go to this purely unbiased and unfiduculous training where they will get a full picture of what antisemitism is and what it is not. The American Jewish Congress Committee aims to speak for all Jews, but they absolutely do not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm a parent of a six-year-old son that attends Harvey Milk, as do my two nibblings. If you don't know what that term means, it's a term for siblings, non-binary, or trans children. It's a term that even in progressive San Francisco, I don't use often because I'm usually met with confusion. Even here, gender non-conforming children are misunderstood. The CDC says that one in four trans teens attempts suicide and they are bullied and feeling unsafe at school. Harvey Milk is a safe space for our youngest trans kids, an equity point that you do not seem to have considered. The school truly fosters inclusion and bullying, and bullying is not a big issue here. It's why I chose to send my sensitive and neurodivergent child. While other elementary schools are celebrating Harvey Milk Day and teach that he fought for the rights of queer people and lost his life for it, half this country would call this the woke agenda and doesn't even think children like my nibblings should exist. This is San Francisco. We should be leading the country and making sure all kids are seen and feel safe.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Julie and I wanted to share my disappointment with the district's decision to invite AJC to provide training on antisemitism. The organization's pro-war and confuses critique of Israel with antisemitism. As a Jewish parent of multiracial kids, this doesn't reflect my Jewish values or make my Jewish, or make my family safer. One of the founding moments in my Jewish identity was seeing my cousins arguing with my aunts and uncles about how important it has been to speak out against genocide in Sudan and not try to set aside the Jewish experience as exceptional. I want my children to understand that our safety as Jewish people is connected to the safety of everyone around us. A standalone training that protects Israel does not protect my family or the Arab, Black, Asian, Indigenous, and other youth in our district who have been under attack with no required professional development.
My name is Josh Friedman. I'm a Jewish parent of a Jewish SFUSD student and I'm here to speak out against the so-called antisemitism training reinstated for high school teachers tomorrow. The training is to be provided by the AJC. The AJC is a Jewish organization, but its primary mission is to advocate for Israel, in its own words. Practically, this has meant they have used their power to oppose a ceasefire in Gaza and have platformed the war criminal Netanyahu. It seems absurd to me that the board would allow a pro-genocidal war, pro-apartheid, anti-Arab organization to train our teachers. Tonight, you have heard from many of our brave Palestinian students about the racism they experience at SFUSD. We do not fight racism by pitting Jewish students against Palestinian students.
Thank you. Okay, going to call the next group. Alexia Abol, Sarah Sullivan, Laura Kiswani, Galen Spore, and Alex Sweet.
Thank you, Alex. I have two kids at SFC. Those, the last few days have been a real show of failed communications, honestly. Very disappointing. And all that to learn that among others, SFC is being merged and moved. By that you mean closed. So you are planning to close SFC because it's a small school? Doesn't seem like there's any other reason, without even thinking of how to make the model work? No matter that SFC is in Kids Ridge D11, a project-based school, a tight and very diverse community, and by design focused on equity? You say we need to make these difficult decisions, but you still have not shown any supporting data. Why is this going to save 22 million to the budget? Why is this good for our students? What are your criteria and how did you make sure this list was serving all students equitably? Please be transparent about the decision process.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Sullivan. I'm a parent at SF Community School. We've just learned that our school is on a list of potential mergers. What I want to know is whether the superintendent only sees numbers when he looks at schools to close or merge. Has he ever visited the rich and vibrant Westside school communities he's intending to dissolve and merge after decades of de-investment? The rank inequality of starving schools of resources only to then blame them for failing is racist, classist, and completely blind. If you can truly come to our school and see our diverse and engaged community as failing, there is something wrong with the way you are defining failing. Because we are a school that practices what we preach, community, social justice, education of the whole person. This is SFUSD at its best. If you close us, you are closing one of the most dynamic community learning spaces in the district. The numbers are not telling you the whole story.
Thank you.
Hello, it's Galen. Hi, good to see you. I talked to you last Tuesday at the special hearing also. Parent of a child at SFC, which is the correct size for our community. We are the reason that you started the Small Schools Initiative. We are the only project in school. As Ms. Mary has said, we are the mothership of all of your progressive and alternative programs. I notice the school closures list that you put out today only affects one Westside school. We mapped it for you because you didn't put out a map to accompany that. And if you look at that map, it's very telling. The Chronicle put out an article today that said San Francisco could see 11 schools shuttering, shifting 2,000 students, and saving up to 22 million. Is there an official or private or public fiscal analysis that shows where this 22 million figure came from? Where was that derived from? We would love to see the data because up till now, we've been hearing that it's been a negligible amount of money that we'll save from closing schools for Palestine.
Good evening, my name is Laura Kiswani. I am the Executive Director of AROCK, the Arab Resource and Organizing Center. I too am here with some hard decisions, as you are as a leader superintendent. I'm here making a decision to spend time with our students, our youth, our parents, and our teachers who are appalled by some of the decisions of this district instead of attending to my family, my community, who are facing a genocide. I have lost over four dozen people in my own family. That's nothing compared to some of the students who've chosen to pull out of your schools because of the disregard that this district has shown them. I come here to say that you are met with hard decisions, including making some decisions about the management in your own district who have chosen to focus on propagandizing their teachers with a pro-Israel, pro-genocide organization instead of dealing with school closures and taking care of working-class people of color in your own city. And that should be the priority. So rather than focusing on propagandizing our teachers, focus on taking care of the working-class impacted students in the city, including Arab, Palestinian, and Muslim students. And welcome to join us in learning how to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, Commissioners. Superintendent Wayne, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time and attention. My name is Alex. I'm here as a parent of a second grader at Harvey Milk. When our daughter was ready for kindergarten, we weren't sure what kind of student she was going to be, but we knew she likely needed some extra help and needed a supportive community, and that's why we chose Harvey Milk. And while we sought some outside evaluations and assessments, something magical happened, which is that her kindergarten teacher and classmates created what I can only describe as like a structured, encouraging, nurturing cocoon for her. And while she had an incredible kindergarten teacher, shout out Ms. Blashty, it was more than that. Because it continued. It happened in kindergarten and happened again in first grade, and it's continued into second. The culture at Harvey Milk Civil Rights Academy is almost no-nonsense inclusivity. Like kid A has brown hair, kid B uses they/them pronouns, kid C gets easily overwhelmed in large crowds and needs headphones, and that's my kid. And so when I think about putting our kids at the center, it's making sure that Harvey Milk's intentional culture can continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Monique Lambrus, Sabrine Vitale, Casey Hope, and Nadia Bick.
Okay. My name is Vitali and I am actually a parent of two students. And I heard that superintendent is looking much on numbers. But I'm looking at numbers and they don't sound. Like I checked it with a very popular rating, and it seems like it's minus 0.9 correlation. So best schools got least ratings. I don't know why. I don't know how it came up with these numbers. Like I don't see any transparency. Like if you check some really great schools, like Peabody, like they got 15 points. How? They got very good rating. They got very good enrollment. A lot of schools that are closed got wait lists. Like there's something really, really wrong with those numbers, and we don't see any transparency on this. I see that these numbers are not transparent and just incorrect for me as a mess person.
Hello, my name is Sabrine. I work as a youth organizer with the Arab Resource and Organizing Center. Some of you guys might recognize me because I was here a lot last year advocating for aid, which you guys rescinded, by the way. And coming back to SFUSD again, it's heartbreaking. I don't want to really be here. I organize a lot of San Francisco public school youth, and in the last year, I've had to play the role. I don't want to cry in front of you guys because you guys don't care. But I've had to play the role of a therapist to the Arab youth, the Palestinian youth that you guys don't care about. I've had students call me because they're getting interrogated by school administrators and their teachers and humiliated in front of their friends and peers. It's messed up. You guys are so institutionally racist. It's crazy and it's insane how you guys get to top it every single time. It's so shameful. I don't even know how I can even be more disappointed in you guys. You guys don't even care. You guys are going to move on with a pro-war, pro-genocide organization leading this. If you look at their website, the first thing is a big Israeli flag that says "We stand with Israel," the Israel that's killed these students' families. Shame.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Monique from Gias. I'm a parent of two students, one in elementary school and one in middle school. I think you all are horrible, horrible people. You should be fired for doing an awful job, and you should be arrested and jailed for stealing our children's education. And what the hell are you doing with our taxpayer money? We are one of the richest school districts in the world, one of the richest cities in the world. But you don't hire teachers and you're closing schools. Think on my school that my daughters go to is a being closed. But my child in elementary school has had a sub all year. Because you don't hire teachers that have interviewed. What need to bomb and murder children in Palestine and around the world? While here in SF, our children are also suffering and demand the human rights for quality education. We should have a national strike and demand our human rights and occupation and demand that our taxpayer may be given a big education here.
Thank you.
Or you ask to go to jail.
Hello, this is the Spanish interpreter. I just want to remind people on the podium, please do not put your mouth too close because it sounds muffle and it's impossible for us to do the interpretation. Please. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Nadia Conrad-Bick and I have a student at SFC. We actually transferred him last year in the middle of the year, and we found our community. My son is autistic, and this school is the only school I felt safe to send him to. I am appalled by the list. I have seen, sorry. I have seen the list. I've seen what schools are on this list. I don't know where my throat is doing this. And they are all small schools. I don't know why. I'm sorry. I need water. Can I come back? Yes.
Hi, my name is Cassie Hope. I'm the proud parent to a second grader at San Francisco Community, one of the schools on the list to be merged with another K-8. I chose to send my daughter to SFC, a school where a sense of community is prioritized and whose virtues I admire and hope to instill in my child. Virtues such as respect, perseverance, equity, society. I also chose SFC because of the project-based learning component, as I recognize how valuable a skill set it is to learn how to dive deep on a subject and how to collaborate and work in teams. And lastly, because it was a small and intimate environment, one in which I know my child needs in order to thrive. What I want to know is how can you guarantee she will get the same experience I signed up for after this merger?
Sorry. May I try one more time? Thank you. So, again, my name is Nadia Conrad-Bick, and I have a son at SFC. And I am so happy that we have the community that we have. It is so important for San Francisco to have small schools. I ask that you stop targeting these small schools and keep them open. These communities need this, especially District 11. District 11 has the highest number of kids in public schools. And yet, the southeast has been targeted. We are having the most school mergers, which actually will lead to closures. I ask that you fully staff every school before you decide to close or merge it so that you can show that we, so that you can allow us to become successful. You need to make sure that every school that has sped students is a priority. And you need to make sure that if you're gonna cut anything, you cut from the top. I'm sorry, but I know that we have the superintendent that gets the most in California. He should be taking the pre-cut first before our schools.
Thank you.
Okay, going to call the next group. Sama Wasim Hayo, Natalie Hodgman, Victor Ward, Alex.
Good evening. I'm also here to comment on the pro-Zionist group that you all went behind the community's back and decided to give teachers trainings with. You all should be reflective of the communities that you serve. But from what everybody talked about today, it doesn't sound like you're reflecting anybody except your own self-interest. Instead, instead of being reflective of this community, there has been zero transparency about school closures, about this training for teachers, and there has been a lack of process and inclusion when it comes to this, to this antisemitism teacher training that's taking place district-wide. SFUSD is engaging a private, politically motivated organization that promotes Islamophobia and anti-Arab hate. That's who you all are working with, and that's who you want training our teachers. As a parent, I demand you hold these trainings and that you allow for a process that is community-centered.
That's your type.
To provide the correct training to our teachers.
Thank you.
Otherwise, resign.
Hi, members of the board, Superintendent Wayne. My name is Wasim Hajj. I am with the Arab Resource and Organizing Center. As you've heard, over the last year, I have watched so many Arab kids come through our doors struggling because our entire community collectively is watching our homelands be bombed in a US-funded war. My family's house in Lebanon was destroyed last week, and that is not, doesn't come close to some of the loss that some of these students here today in our youth program, in our schools, have experienced. When you bring in a pro-war, pro-genocide organization, it makes us, to do professional development for teachers, it makes us ask as a community, who are you listening to? You have heard from Arab parents. You have heard from Jewish parents. You have heard, you've received thousands of letters, hundreds of letters at least, asking you to stop this training and empower your ethnic studies program to do the job. Who are you listening for?
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Natalie. My daughter is a second grader at Harvey Milk Civil Rights Academy. My daughter has thrived at Harvey Milk. She runs into class every day and has been able to connect with kids at the school in all grades. A real gift of being in a small school. Harvey Milk is an important part of the San Francisco story. It fosters a wonderful learning environment that includes a unique civil rights curriculum and a safe space for the LGBTQ+ community. Please do not close this gem of the Castro. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Victor Ward, and I'm here to talk about a non-agendized item. But I did want to say I'm a little bit reluctant because there's so much passion in the room, and kudos to the community. Also, kudos to the board, the superintendent. I know none of these issues are easy. And I know you're talking about, I know, I know we're talking about things like math, like finances. As you know, Proposition 28 has already reserved a certain amount of finances to go to the arts programs for the district for each school. And my company competes EDU, is an online video platform. We believe it's terrific for supporting the arts and music program, satisfies all the requirements of Prop 28, and will be giving scholarship to students as a part of the rewards program. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Alex Landsberg. I'm a parent of two high school kids, neither of whom are in a school that's about to be closed. I'm here because a smug and clearly incompetent administrator is failing the SFUSD community at your direction, all the while smirking throughout the entire public comment process. So two things I want to say. First, your school closures. The list that you released today shows that the schools are black or poor and have less English proficiency. And this is all being done under the guise of equity. It's just BS. Second, let's talk about antisemitism training. As important as antisemitism training is, let's be real. This is a supremacist, Jewish supremacist apartheid promoting group. Anti-Zionism has been part of the Jewish experience ever since Zionism was formed as a nationalist political ideology 125 years ago. So I want to read something from 1937 that rings true today. What can a Jewish Palestine be in the best-case scenario? A small kingdom of a tiny Hebrews tribe within the Jewish people? When Zionists speak to the non-Jewish world, they're outstanding democrats. And they present the conditions in today's, in future Palestine as exemplary of liberty and progress. Hold on.
Please respect the other speakers. Please respect other speakers. Thank you.
Okay, going to call the next group. Veronica Pitman, Parag Gupta, M. Villanueva, Sarah Powell, and Cecilia Lee.
I know that time limits are frustrating. A minute is not enough to say nearly everything that we want to say. So just, but just please add a respect for other speakers. We want to be fair and give everyone a minute. So please try to wrap up when the timer goes off. You know, finish your, you have a couple more seconds, and then at least it will cut you off. So she's not trying to be rude, but we've got to be fair and equitable to all the speakers. Thank you.
Thank you. Press the button.
Hi, my name is Veronica Pitman, and I am a parent leader of the African-American Parent Advisory Council, as well as the mother of a second grader. And I recently read an article about how many children aren't getting the services promised in their IEPs, my child being included in that. And it's not because the schools don't want to help, but it's mainly due to SFUSD's hiring process. So my question is, what is the point of taking time to make all these policies and procedures and handbooks and documents if at the end of the day, all they're going to say is, we have the staff. I was wondering, like, when are we going to get the staff here so that the students with special needs can get the services that they deserve?
Thank you.
I'm sorry. This is the Spanish interpreter once again. Please refrain yourselves to put your mouth very close to the mic because it sounds muffle and we cannot hear what you're saying. Thank you.
Thank you. So just gentle reminder to the rest of our speakers, if you can just kind of step up, don't speak so closely to the mic. Thank you.
Great. My name is Parag Gupta. I'm an SFUSD parent. School board members, I know you have a very difficult decision ahead of you come this December. I hope that the data that's presented to you, I know the school closure list is presented, or at least the initial list and what qualifies. I hope the data presented, when it ultimately is presented, will consider that more than 40% of our public school students do live in D11, do live in the southeast. And I hope we can believe and trust and upraise the excellence in our southeast corner of the city. I also hope that the data that will be presented to the board will hear the hurt. The data should be transparent. The school meetings that are conducted should be collaborative and not co-opt. And then, please, I look forward to hearing a plan from the superintendent or school administrators as to how we are supporting our families and our educators going forward past December. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Sarah Powell. I'm here as a concerned citizen of San Francisco, as a former teacher, and as a Middle East historian. I noticed that you opened this meeting today by honoring the indigenous stewards of the land. And it absolutely blows me out of the water that you have the heart and spa to do that while hiring a genocidal, actively genocidal, a genocide that is, as we speak, killing tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of people, wasting land to train teachers against some kind of racist bigotry? Are you kidding me? What is the training after George Floyd was killed? And the war was big? What is the training that let me specify? East Asian Americans were under attack in San Francisco. Austrians, Arabs, six countries being bombed are both Asian and Semitic. You keep these other schools open.
Hi, board members. My name is Cecilia Lee. This is my son Alexander. He is a second grader at Harvey Milk School. He actually asked me to come tonight and come up to public comment because we wanted to share what Harvey Milk Civil Rights Academy has meant to our family, as you all consider the kind of education we want all of our cities as you all consider the kind of education we want all of our city's kids to have. So, you know, Harvey Milk School is a city, is a school where every child is known by every adult. It's a cornerstone of the Castro community where we live. We have a unique teacher-led civil rights curriculum where our kids are taught to center social justice and inclusion. And I've seen the impacts firsthand in the school culture and how our students act and show up every day. And I can say that Harvey Milk is a place where students are kind, they support each other, they celebrate all racial and cultural backgrounds, gender identities, learning differences, and our students stand up for each other. So, that's why we're here to stand up for our school. And I just want to end by saying that that's due to our incredible staff. I urge you to center them and their well-being and their voices in this devastating closure process because they are who makes our community what it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
... related by SFUSD in 2018 that though outlets have excess of five, five billion of lead at BHM. In December of 2022, SFUSD reported that multiple outlets had excess of five plus a billion of lead. We want to demand that they test the water, even planning to. I remember Superintendent, you were there at that meeting. Even after the soil was tested positive, we are constantly having to beg you to do your jobs to have ready water at BHM. In January, in June of 2023, SFUSD reported multiple outlets of plus a billion of lead. In September of 2023, SFUSD reported multiple outlets of plus five possible billion of lead. This past week, the SFUSD, there's still lead in the outlets. Fossils were not taken out of service adequately covered. Facilities told us that they covered faucets with safe, that is a lie. Fossils that are not safe, they're covered on.
Thank you, that's your time.
It's happening. Our kids are afraid to drink their own water, and all the water is inadequate. This happened during the classroom. We're over 90 degrees.
Thank you.
Drinking lead-free water. Shame on you.
That concludes the person. Let's go to online public comment, please.
At this time, we will have, we'll hear public comment from our virtual participants. Please raise your hand. Each participant, each speaker will get one minute. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas noches. Este es el turno de los participantes en línea. Les pedimos a todos aquellos participantes que recuerden que tienen solamente un minuto. Gracias.
Thank you, Luis. Thank you.
Thank you. Reyna?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Reyna Tejo, family liaison with Five Elements, community organizer with BOLDEF, SFUSD alumni, and a parent of two SFUSD students, one of whom is a junior at June Jordan School for Equity. Over the past months, we have presented our demands to stop the SFUSD runaway train, putting a pause to the school closures process until real solutions to bridge the budget gap are identified. Authentically engaging the schools and communities that are most vulnerable to these school closures, and I have not received any communication to engage with me as a parent before the release of the list today. I cannot express to you the damage that you have caused today. Superintendent Wayne, you showed a picture of three smiling children and said that these are tough decisions to ensure quality education for all students, but what you are doing is putting the burden on the backs of the students at small schools by design. The same students and parents who have shown up, meeting after meeting, imploring you to have a real plan to fix the deficit, which this will not fix. A month's time is not enough time to meaningfully engage us and the impacted school. You have answered no questions that we asked you in June. How can we trust that SFUSD will answer the ones we have now?
Thank you. That is your time. Thank you. Sarita?
Hello, my name is Sarita. I'm a teacher in SFUSD, and I just wanted to reiterate what literally all of the rest of the speakers have said. This decision is racist. You all at the board are racist. And this has been said to you time and time again. When you refuse to acknowledge E, that is racism. When you continue to support pro-genocide organizations and pretend that this is apolitical in teaching about antisemitism, that is racism. You are not thinking about the experiences of our Arab and Palestinian students and the extreme trauma that they are under. And by you planting this in our schools as a quote-unquote unbiased training, it's a farcical thing. Not only that, but you are now making the racist decision to close majority Black and Brown schools, which is what I told you last meeting and the meeting before and the meeting before, was the wrong decision, that there has been no data shown how this decision fixes the deficit. And also, just a point, it's also Latina Heritage Month, and these are, you know, communities that are affected are also Latina communities and immigrant communities. And that is not something you mentioned at the beginning either, Dr. Wayne. So, shame on all of you.
Thank you. Juana?
My name is Juana Tejo, community partner to SFUSD via Five Elements Youth Program, serving youth across Southeast public schools. I echo the demands of students, parents, and educators who are concerned about the flaws of defaulting to closing or merging small schools as a solution to the budget crisis in SFUSD. I've been a witness to the way our community has mobilized week after week outside of the school board because research shows that closing public schools, regardless of size, is an ineffective approach to address the root causes of our district's problems. Closing small schools will have a minimal impact on the gap in the budget, yet a direct attack on the remaining vulnerable working-class families of color in our city. We also extend our support to the Palestinian students who fight back against racist dehumanization and the silencing of their voices. It's unacceptable that you allow a pro-genocidal, pro-Zionist organization to provide professional development to your district staff and in the same breath, attack and silence Palestinian histories and perspectives. Shame on you.
Thank you. Erica?
Hi, thank you all. I have, so I'm a parent of a kindergartner at San Francisco Community Alternative School, the city's first community school. And my question for you all is simple. How was equity defined in this process? And how is equity being defined in this process? When five out of the 13 schools on the list are from districts 10 and 11, 11 districts in the city, and five out of the 13. You know, President Alexander, you've said that you're concerned that the school closure process could be racist, and you're committed not to repeating the mistakes of the past. And I implore you, please think about how equity is being defined. My daughter's school is 75% children of color in the neighborhood that has the highest density of schoolchildren in the city, as has been said. Please, you know, think about how equity is being defined. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sarah Meskin. I am a SFUSD public school parent. My kids are at James Lake and Daniel Webster, neither school, which is on the closure list. I think that for me, listening to all these public comments and following this story very closely for the last few months, is just really showing me that the communication that SFUSD and the district has put out has really been subpar. I think parents are confused, they are frustrated, they don't entirely feel like this process has been transparent. And so, I would really ask in the upcoming few weeks and months, I would really ask that the board and the district as a whole is trying to focus on actually communicating with parents and families better so that we know what's happening and so that people aren't living in this kind of constant state of anxiety. I really would ask for you guys to put information out that is digestible for, you know, people who maybe don't understand the system entirely, and to make sure that you're really focused on making sure that parents, particularly parents and families, that are... Thank you.
Thank you. Alan?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, good evening. My name is Alan Tello. I am a junior at June Jordan School for Equity. I'm here again to demand Matt Wayne to restart the RAI process to ensure the most vulnerable voices are heard and that we ask the questions that get to the root of the problem. This runaway train is not going to close the gap in the budget. It won't even make a dent, top from the top. I've been to almost every single one of these Board of Education meetings and the community sessions Dr. Wayne held and still have not heard any answers to our questions, nor any plan to support our teachers and students, the people who should be his priority. It's disrespectful to the students who give public comment, and it feels like it goes in one ear and out the other. Listen to your students and families. As a board, you are responsible to ensure that Dr. Matt Wayne makes the decisions that are best for the students. You are not doing your job. Keep him accountable. Stop hurting vulnerable students. We will remember your decisions as we are affected by the actions you take. I just want, I just want to remind you that we were promised no educators will lose their jobs. We want to see the implementation plan that ensures this will be true. Stop the SFUSD runaway train. Don't play politics with our education. Free Palestine, support our Palestinian students. And sorry I had to speak so fast, the one-minute time limit.
Thank you. Tom?
Hi, my name is Tom. My wife and I have two students in the district. Sorry, and we're both special education teachers. You know, I think one word is trust. And when you have these town halls that are coming up, is anything going to change? If all parents in the community voice anything, is the superintendent going to do anything different? No. And be honest with that. The board, hold them accountable. You say you will. You hired him, even though he closed a bunch of schools in Hayward. He came to Dolores Huerta, where I work, after I called the board so many times, can you visit the school? And then he said, I haven't come here because I came here years ago. I think this is all just show. And he gave himself a raise a while ago. And for what? What has changed? The mayor had to step in and uncovered this $20 or $30 million for special ed. The hiring practices are awful. Instead of addressing that, right, we're going to close schools? What is that going to solve? What has he done that is beneficial? I keep asking that, and we keep trying to skirt and say, oh, he inherited that. No one forced him to take this job and to take this.
Rhonda?
Superintendent Wayne, board commissioners, and everybody in attendance tonight. Initially, I called in for June Jordan. I still stand with them, and I asked that you reverse that decision. Just because a school is small does not mean that it doesn't bring value. And so, I asked that you revisit the list. But also, I am heartbroken right now, and I had to clear up my tears because I wanted to speak clearly for Palestinian students and families. It is wrong, 100% wrong, how you all are treating them. I do not understand how a district that says that they are about equity has pro-Israel stuff or standing with Israel on their website. Can you please make that make sense to me? How do you, as individuals, who could have family members yourselves that are being massacred every single day, stand here and say that you need to be more sympathetic to Israel? You can't be biased. You have students that are come from every background, and it is your duty and responsibility to stand up and support each and every student in this district. Our families matter, all of them, and they deserve support. You protect the students. Do not.
Parents for public schools?
Hi, good evening. This is Vanessa Marrero, speaking on behalf of parents of public schools of San Francisco that has been and will continue to be an institution and adamant about no school closures. While I recognize that many of the schools on the list are slated for mergers, I need all of the board members to understand what detrimental impacts this will have on local communities. Parents of public schools of San Francisco will not stand down. We will continue to advocate. We will go to both the state and national level to ensure that you are doing your due diligence to make equity apparent for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna?
Hi, I'm Anna Garcia. I am a parent of three kids in the district. I feel like I'm here every time, trying a new argument. Like, maybe this will be the one that will move you guys to stop these school closures, but I don't know. I mean, kids have literally cried in your face, saying, don't close my school, and it's still happening. So, I don't know if anything is going to move you, but I'm going to talk fast. So, basically, we keep getting told that these closures are necessary for the budget and that it has to be balanced. But, like, that's not how the government works. Our country has been running on credit for forever, and the debt ceiling is only raised as an issue when politicians want to make cuts to social programs. Somehow, we always have money for these embezzlements that are happening or paying off lawsuits. Like, we are telling kids that their civil rights are not worth the money. What do you have to do? You want to balance the budget? Just go be on our side and fight for more for our kids. I just... I'm done.
Thank you. Erin?
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Erin Dumont. I'm the parent of a fourth grader in the district. I'm very grateful tonight for all the parents and caregivers that have shown up for our students and their schools. I think it's important to note that the district itself has noted that this will not save them money. I don't understand what the point of this is. Superintendent Wayne keeps saying that these are hard decisions and hard conversations, but yet has not backed himself up into why. I think I have a theory, and that's that this racist, unproven effort by this district to sell off sites and privatize schools is how they're going to make their money back. It's a disgrace. I think they should rethink this process, and I think they should end the entire thing. This is such a waste of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Eva?
Hi, my name is Eva. I'm a parent of a first grader at San Francisco Community School. I want to echo what everyone has said. Please slow this process down and stop school closures. There are other places to cut and better manage the money. That's not the parent's job to figure that out. That's not the student's job to figure that out. That's the administrators. That's what an administrator is. Our families deserve safety and to keep their communities and schools open. Students and teachers deserve clean water. If we're not even able to keep water clean at schools, like, that should be a focus, and students need spaces that are free of racism and harassment. All of these issues are connected, and they're relating to racism and inequality. And if we're saying that we're a district that focuses on equity, then we're not doing that by having all these issues. So, stop school closures, listen to what everybody is saying, and do the job that administrators do, which is to figure out creative solutions that don't impact students negatively.
I'm sorry. Thank you so much. Sorry. Jennifer?
Hi, I'm sure I'm not the first person to say this tonight, but I would like to congratulate the superintendent and board for managing to put June Jordan, Malcolm X, and Harvey Milk all on a closure list. If you were trying to convince us that equity mattered to you, that's a fail. This is Project 25, 2025 nonsense. I also want to know why we're still opening a four-kindergarten school at Mission Bay if we have to close 11 elementary schools? Because let's not pretend mergers are anything except closures. We've heard a lot from some schools tonight, and while they spat fire, but I want to stand up for one of the schools we have not heard from, Eldorado, a school with a full TK through five autism program, a school that has been fundamentally destroyed by this district for over 20 years, who have had staff bring national attention to the way this district uses its resources in ways that inculcate white supremacy. Of course, you want to close Eldorado. It's a problem for you. All of these schools matter. There is no reason to close any of them. It's time to have fewer administrators at 555, hit a superintendent who's willing to do the job rather than pass the buck.
Jennifer, thank you. That's your time. Thank you. Tom?
Oh yeah, I already spoke. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Anna and I am a proud parent and graduate of um James Lake Middle School and I have a daughter, a son at Daniel Webster. My schools are not impacted, yet I still think that we're supposed to be here and advocate for each other and our students and families. And that's supposed to be your job, superintendent and the Board of Education. You're supposed to look up for the best well-being of our children and closing your school is telling our kids we don't care about them. You're trying to uh make it seem like, oh, we gave our teachers a raise and that's why we have to, you know, cut down on other expenses. Guess what? Our teachers work so much harder than you do and I believe that we should continue to um advocate for them and stop using the Board of Education as a stepping stone for your political um stepping to move somewhere else. Like really, if you want to do this job and listen to our families, listen to our students, my kids went up to you and told you the kids don't want their schools being closed and you continue to do the same thing. Nothing. You don't listen to our families. I'm tired of this. We always come and tell you, listen, let's work together, but you continue to do the opposite. You don't listen to our families and you continue to do whatever the fuck you want to do. Thank you.
That does conclude the amount of time allotted for a virtual public comment.
Thank you. And I want to thank everyone who spoke tonight
Palestine.
All the on all the issues. Um and particularly just to remind uh members of the public that in terms of the issue around school mergers and closures, um as the superintendent noted at the beginning, this is um his and the staff's best thinking right now and they're engaging in a community process and the board encourages everyone to engage in that process with the superintendent and staff. Um and then he will bring a plan, a final plan to us in November for a vote in December. Um the board obviously will be um you know, uh emphasizing the points that we've emphasized all along, that we want to make sure that there's been meaningful community engagement, that there's a clear transition plan if there are going to be mergers and closures that would support all impacted students, families and staff, that there's a fiscal analysis approved by the California Department of Education, that there's an independent equity audit that shows that there is no disproportionate impact on marginalized communities and that there's an analysis of how these mergers or closures would be in line with our uh chain, proposed changes to the enrollment system. So those are all issues just that haven't yet come to the board and that would with the final plan. Uh but again, we encourage um members of the community to to engage with superintendent and staff and give the feedback that he's requesting. Um so now a- and there will also, as he said, there'll be town halls. You can look at our website. There's more information on that. So um now we're moving to the item, the next agenda item, which is the audit. Um sorry, the unaudited actuals, not the audit. Um and let me find it. It's item F, approval of unaudited actuals, financial reports and adoption of the GAN limit resolution for the San Francisco Unified School District and County Office of Education for fiscal year twenty-two-three, twenty-four. Um can I get a motion in a second, please?
Sub moved.
Second.
Thank you. And Superintendent Wayne or?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, yeah, sit up here, please.
You can't do better, is that?
Not so you guys know, you all make me want to drop out of high school. Support your Palestinian students, support your Arab and Muslim community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do your job better.
Right. Um uh thank you, President Alexander. As you shared, this is our unaudited actuals, which is a fancy way of saying our closing of the books from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So to
You're racist, not Wayne.
So to share the um the status of our end of year financials, uh I would like to welcome Associate Superintendent of Business Services, Dr. Michelle Huntun and our Head Financial Officer, Jackie Chen.
Thank you. Good evening, President Alexander, Superintendent Wayne and Commissioners, community that is joining us in person and online. Thank you. Um and the PowerPoint, perfect, great, thank you. Um so um this, this evening, we're going to be reviewing the twenty-three, twenty-four unaudited actuals, which includes the actual expenditures for transactions for revenues and expenditures for last fiscal year. So for the business division, this is really the report card at the end of the year. And so that's the way that we review that. It's important to note that the financials are audited by an independent outside audit firm every year. They will, they will conduct the the audit and they will um complete that on or before December fifteenth. So that will be then coming to you in December for receipt. So we'll go through um highlights of the closing and take questions at the end of the presentation. I do want to take just a few moments to thank the staff um in in Ms. Chen's um department. She's gonna start us off this evening, but um she and her staff have worked really hard um to put all of this together. And so thank you, Ms. Chen, for that. And so I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Huntun. And before um I started the presentation here and I would actually um thank you, my colleagues and uh um kudos to Business Service Executive Director Shan Li, Director Carter uh Carter Chan, um Budget Officer and Jennifer and Tara Payroll Department Executive Director LaChis and Director William and everyone involved in this um year and the closing process. Next. Uh fiscal year on twenty-three, twenty-four year ended on June thirtieth. We are a single district at a county. The district is required to submit the unaudited actual to the county of education by September fifteenth. County of Education are required to submit their unaudited actuals no later than October fifteenth. To align the district and the county of education with the statutory guidelines, the unaudited actuals will be provided to the board annually by September fifteenth for the district and October fifteenth for the county of education. Following the board's approval tonight, we will submit our official documents to the state. Here is a high-level overview of the County of Education Fund. This table provides a side-by-side comparison between the unaudited actuals and the estimated actuals as of June thirtieth, twenty-two-four. The comparison includes a key elements such as the beginning fund balance, revenue expenditure and the net surplus or shortfall, which ultimately determine the ending fund balance. The end of the fund, the ending fund balance for twenty-three, twenty-four improved by one million, about one million and a point eight-eight. Compared to the estimated actual, revenue declined by two million and the expenditures were reduced by three million. Brings the ending fund balance to thirteen million dollars. Out of the thirteen million ending fund balance, seven-point-six million has been committed to meeting the growing demands of the county program. Five million represent the restricted program and the rest are the required three percent of the reserve. Overall, County of Education Fund maintains a healthy ending fund balance above the three percent reserve. Well, I think that's the previous. Yeah, can you go back to the previous slide? Thank you.
Oh, um just on the bottom portion of that page. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Um let's shift our focus on the comparison between the unaudited actual and estimated actual for the district, the general fund. The ending balance has shown a positive improvement. Unrestricted net surplus of seven-point-nine million and thirty-one-point-eight million in restricted, which brings a total ending fund balance of four-hundred-sixty-seven million. We have a thirty-eight million net increase in one-time unrestricted revenue offset by a decrease in restricted revenue of twenty-six million. Due to the vacant positions and unspent restricted program expenditure, we have net expenditure reduction of fifty-four million in unrestricted and sixty-nine million in restricted funds. Next. Next. Our long-term fiscal outlook remains unchanged based on the unaudited actual for twenty-three, twenty-four. Enrollment has continued to declining by eight percent since nineteen-twenty. Due to the declining of the enrollment, the real color has shown decreased to negative two-point-four percent in twenty-four, twenty-five and is projected at less than one percent for twenty-five, twenty-six. Now I will turn over to Dr. Huntun and for a more detailed analysis for the total revenue, total expenditure for the next two slides.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Um could you go back just one slide to the, okay, it's at the the bottom portion of that. Thank you so much. So now we're gonna um turn our sights to looking at the estimated actuals versus the unaudited actuals for revenues. And there were five categories that we're highlighting here. Uh we're showing the home-to-school transportation lottery, sales tax revenue, interest revenue and fair market value. And in all of those cases, we're showing that there was an increase between estimated actuals and unaudited actuals. Okay, next slide, please. Now we turn to the expenditures looking to the same time period, estimated actuals versus unaudited actuals. And what we're seeing um in this area, we're seeing certificated salaries increasing and then decreasing expenditures in classified salaries, benefits, and then a combination of operations, materials and supplies. And where we're seeing those um reductions in expenditures is primarily due to vacant positions and unspent um um unspent restricted programs. Um and in many cases, those are funding sources that are going multiple years, so they wouldn't have been spent in that year. They'll be spent in a subsequent year. So one thing that I would just say overall before I turn it back to to Ms. Chen is that we are, as we look at those those two periods, we really like to see that pendulum swing and stay in the middle pretty close. And so we would say that we're in a a season of continuous improvement. As we look to that period for next year, our hope is that that swing will be very close to the middle. And we know that we are working with difficult manual systems. We are also looking at our changes in our practices and our procedures. And so that will also help us as we work towards our goal of that pendulum being as close to the middle as possible. And also, we have our new ERP system that will be implemented. Okay, Ms. Chen?
Um this slide represents the components of Thanks. Um this is slides represents the components of both restricted and unrestricted ending fund balance. The total combined ending fund balance is four-hundred-sixty-nine million. Within this um ending fund balance, one-point-of-five million are non-spendable um in revolving cash, stores and prepaid. Two-hundred-and-thirty-eight million are restricted ending fund balance, including federal, state and the local grants. One-hundred-and-four million is committed to the stabilization plan. And there are other committed committed ending fund balance of ninety-eight million allocated for uh various purposes, including sixty million to the rainy uh rainy day reserve and twenty-five million to the system implementation. Others are fair market value of investments, terminated retired retroactive pay and the school merger uh transition plan. Twenty-four-point-six million represents the required two percent economic uncertainty reserve. Next. Um as discussed in the previous slides, twenty-three, twenty-four ending fund balance has improved. This improvement here comes from a mix of the higher local revenue, fair market value change in investments, savings on salaries and other expenditures and the strategic use of one-time federal state and to offset the operating expenditures. Looking ahead to our upcoming first interim, we will focus on a few areas. First, and we are going to update the beginning fund balance for the twenty-four, twenty-five year and adjust the changes in personnel and non-personnel budget uh since the adopted budget. And also, we are going to update the federal state revenues and expenditures, including carryover. Our ongoing analysis will help us identify the trends for twenty-three, twenty-four year that could impact the current year, twenty-four, twenty-five and adjust the budget for the outer two years, twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven in our multi-year projection. The next the financial reporting milestone is the first interim report um by December fifteenth. It's around the corner. Um thank you for the time today. This concludes the presentation and uh open for any questions you might have.
Yeah, and just uh uh thank you for the the presentation. And at the high level, you know, I would say um what we just heard was, you know, some little bit of good news, bad news, and really no news. And the good news is our end of funding balance is in a stronger, stronger place. Um but those are, you know, really, those are just additional one-time funds we have. The bad news, as Dr. Huntun said, is that it's still too wide of a pendulum of when what we're seeing in different reports. And that does need to be tightened up for us to really, you know, be able to demonstrate um that we, you know, have a clear picture of our finances at each reporting period. The low news is, is this really does not change our fiscal outlook at all. The fiscal stabilization plan that we uh submitted in June and then need to update and resubmit in December with our first interim uh still needs to account for ongoing reductions of over a hundred million dollars and uh that doesn't change because of this report. This is just a high-level summary. Thank you um for all, all three of you. Um so colleagues, I would like us to try the same method we've been using for the monitoring workshops, which is going around and asking people to say their questions and then having um staff be able to sort of take notes and organize their responses according to topic. And then we can come back and do follow-ups as needed. But that way it allows them to kind of, I talked with Dr. Huntun before and it allows them to kind of organize their thinking as well. So um anyone feeling up? Commissioner Kim, let's start with you and we'll go around.
Thank you again for um for all your work. Um so it, the desire, so what I heard was that the swing should be decreasing in the future. Eventually, this thirty-nine million dollars should go down over time because we're more accurately budgeting from year to year. Is that right?
Not necessarily. Um what we want is
Oh, sorry.
We're gonna, sorry, you're gonna go around and then we're going to answer.
Um so my question
There was a quick clarifier, though.
Okay, because I think what I'm trying to understand is if we're trying to decrease the swing, what does it mean that our long-term fiscal outlook has not changed then? And so I just, that's a clarifying question around that. Um the bigger question I'm wondering um is just what does this mean in terms of our fiscal stabilization plan moving forward? Um if we're trying to decrease the swing, if we know that we have money, one-time funds left over, I hear that our fiscal stabilization plan generally is not going to change, but I guess I I'm just trying to see a closer relationship between the two and understanding what that means.
Thank you. Um well, it it, yes, I like the the good news, bad news, that we have numbers, we have a little bit more, but eek, we didn't know that it was we were so off. But I I better to have this information and then and then move forward. Um and to know that we are off, I think having that information is really important. So my question is um relating to the the getting the swing closer to the middle is given that we do know that that you all are are working, you know, in profound ways to fix these systems and it takes time. How likely do you think it is that we will actually see a meaningful shift in these discrepancies next year versus two or three years out? I don't want to set ourselves up to be super hopeful that it's gonna look different next year if the reality is it may not because systems aren't in place yet.
Commissioner Sancho, Commissioner Lam?
Thank you, thank you um staff for the presentation. Mine was more related to around um kind of on the thread of what Commissioner Kim had raised. Um so my key question is, um you know, how does this specifically impact um the viewpoint of our state advisors around the deficit spending? Given that the track record was too negative deficit spending, given that the track record was two negative interims in a row? So that's one question I had. Another question I have is related to this big variance. And because of that, I understand it's ongoing of our management systems. And at the same time, want to also understand what does that translate into programs that could have been in place for educational opportunities and learning for our students? And how, moving forward, can we ensure that we're matching closer? So when we talk about the pendulum, it's not just the dollars and cents, but it translates into program and educational opportunities and learnings for our students, particularly our students that we know are furthest from opportunity from our children in special education, English learners, and so in our focal populations.
Thanks, Commissioner Fisher.
These are really, really good questions. I think a lot of my questions, so thank you very much, first of all, really appreciate. As scary as this is, it's good to have data. And so my questions revolve around our systems and infrastructure. You know, as we, as we dig in and do more of these reports in our new systems or with the information that we have right now, what are we learning about what more we need? I'm excited that we're moving to frontline. I think that'll give us some information. And we very likely need other better systems. What else do we need to reduce that pendulum swing from an infrastructure, from an organization, from a system standpoint? What recommendations do you have there? And as far as our compliance requirements for reporting, what do we need to get, in the past, we've had so many issues with, you know, getting reports to auditors, getting completed reports from auditors. Does this information now set us up to be able to bring all that into compliance this year? Or is there more we need? And then my bigger question, really, considering everything we've just been through over the past couple of weeks uncovering the budget fiascos, what are we doing now to make sure that we're not ever in the same situation in future budget cycles?
Commissioner Bogus, no? Okay. And I will just add, maybe echoing what Commissioner Fisher just said, kind of a question specifically about this coming budget cycle, where, you know, where, what is our, knowing that we won't yet have our new financial system in place, what can we expect in terms of our ability to budget accurately? I guess this is related to some of several of, maybe, as President Weissman words question too, for this, specifically for the 2526 year, you know, should we expect something similar in terms of our ability to budget? Or how much more accurate can we get? And then a related question, and this may follow up from, excuse me, Commissioner Lam's too. I know, Dr. Hantun, you have done some thinking on this already, but we'd love to hear a little bit more around, you know, these are some pretty big buckets of variance. What are some questions you have about even about this, this past year that you want to explore more in terms of understanding what happened also? Is that good? So you have, now you have a range of questions to choose from. So why don't we give you some time to answer? And then if colleagues want to follow up, if you feel like your question didn't get answered, or you want to follow up, feel free after they've addressed them.
So I'd like to start with kind of, there was a theme and a pattern regarding the pendulum and what is meant by that. So what you would ultimately like to see between estimated actuals and unaudited actuals, when I talk about the pendulum, you want that pendulum as close to the middle as you can. You're never going to get it right on, but you want to be able to have that, that movement as close to the middle as possible. Every day is a new day and new information, and it will change what we thought maybe from the prior day. And so Jackie has had about a year of that. And I do think that there is an opportunity there. And part of that is to have a debrief about what went well, what didn't go well, how could we make those changes now that will make that difference in, you know, even in the systems that we have currently? How can we, how can we actually make a difference in how we want to work smarter, not harder? But it's going to take some thinking. It's going to, and the other thing is communication within the departments. And Ms. Chen had mentioned several departments that we work with as part of that close includes division departments within ed services and also HR technology. And so having all of those departments, meeting with them and having that collaboration and backwards mapping, just like we do in the classroom. And so making sure that we are meeting our deadlines, that's something that we really need to make sure that's happening. So I'm going to stop there. Oh, I'm gonna, so on this pendulum and the 39 million, that really is the, that is both, it's a makeup of the unrestricted and restricted, so that's showing you what, where that ending amount was for the, for the year. It's revenues over expenditures. And so that's where the 7.9 came from for unrestricted. And I think it was 31 million for, for restricted, unrestricted and restricted. And so that's where that 39 million comes into play. And so when we look at our estimated actuals, we want to make sure that everything that we're taking into account, that we can get as close as possible to that number. Okay, hopefully that was helpful. So I talked about that. The deficits, talk a little bit. I just heard two negative certifications in a row. I thought there was only one negative certification. I don't know, Commissioner Lam? There, I thought you mentioned something about two negative.
Yeah, I believe that there was, or at least an elevation that we went from the fiscal advisors to experts further demonstrating the financial insolvency and high risk of the district. So if I'm miscategorize as two negative, you know, I just wanted also clarify that there has been demonstration of escalation of fiscal insolvency or high risk.
So, yes, you went from that qualified status into that negative status. And that takes you, it all sounds the same, fiscal expert into a fiscal advisor, which increased that participation with the district. And so that, at this point, there is no certification applied to the unaudited actuals. The next time that that is applied, it would be at first interim. So we'll work towards that next item. So I think, give me just a moment here. So the other thing that, there was a question about maximizing funding. And so really, looking at, you know, looking at our contracts, are they still meeting our purpose? Are we using those contracts? What, analyzing our programs, what's working, what's not working? Analyzing the applications that we're utilizing from a technology perspective. Those are all things when you're in this kind of a season that you want to look at those different areas to determine that you're utilizing services that are meeting your needs and also what platform has been established for the district. And so that, I think, is the next steps to really looking at how we move forward, but also the fiscal stabilization, the importance now, we have another data point. That data point is the unaudited actuals, and we'll take that into consideration as we are updating our fiscal stabilization plan. We know that there have been a slowdown in expenditures, and the reason for that is because we are, we're, we've got vacancies and we are slowing down on the expenditures. And so that will be taken into our fiscal stabilization as we are coming. And the first interim and the modified or updated fiscal stabilization program or plan will come together in December. And so that, the unaudited actuals is one data point that will inform what we include in there. So then there was a question about systems and infrastructure. And what are we learning? We're learning to reflect. We're learning to be open. And we're learning to reach out and collaborate and listen and learn. And just think about how we're doing what we're doing and how can we do that differently? And there are more than one way to do something. And so, you know, looking at, I'll give you an example of one of the structures that we're looking at right now. And I know you know this, the district and the county. And so we are really looking at how can we set up the county to function as a county, as the oversight really for compliance purposes. And so we're looking at that structure. We've got kind of a rough draft of that. And so that is also going to be something that will be coming before you soon, which is the internal audit position that the district has not had. And quite frankly, a district of this size, they should. So what would that internal auditor, what would they do as it relates to some of the systems and the functions? They would do what's called transactional audits. So when our, we call them batches, when our vendor payments go through our AP, accounts payable, they would, they would actually review those batches to ensure that we're meeting compliance. That's one example. So that's one system. Another system is really looking at what is happening with our internal controls? How is the flow of requisitions coming from the site to the district office? That is something that is being taken into consideration as far as our new ERP system. And there is going to be some changes with that because we want to make sure that we're tightening up on our internal controls. So I could give you a whole laundry list. I'm just going to stop there with those. But it gives you a flavor of what, what we're looking at. The compliance audit reports, yes, we will meet our December 15th.
I think, sorry, I interrupted, but I think there's a follow-up on that before we get to the next one.
You mentioned the, for the county program, this 6.62 million committed ending fund balance to meet the growing demands of the county program.
County?
Yes.
Oh, yes, yes. That was mistaken.
Can you explain more what the growing demands are?
So would you like to talk about that? You want me to? Okay. So the growing, we have students in our county program. And so the number of students are growing in those alternative programs.
I see. So this doesn't have anything to do with a desire for greater accountability from a county system or anything like that? This is purely based on student need at the county level?
No, I think in terms of like setting up county functions or?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think the, the idea is, right, that from an oversight and review perspective, that the county functions give that, that review of our budgets, our HR processes, our special education plans, kind of create that separate process that a county typically does, which right now, because they're not as clearly delineated, hasn't happened in the districts, right? So it's to set up like, you know, internal auditing and those kind of things.
There's, there are some functions that are happening within, together, sort of. And so we're pulling those apart so that, as Dr. Wayne has indicated, we're going to have a wall and it will be very delineated in terms of the functions. Thank you.
Yeah, I think you had another point you wanted to finish.
Yes, yeah. On the compliance and meeting our compliance guidelines, Ms. Chen had mentioned a couple of them related to unaudited actuals, but our audit report is due December 15th and it will happen. And so that, that report will be completed. Also, along the compliance, what are we doing differently? And I think maybe it was specifically in the area of special ed. I'll speak to that. One of the things that we've already started, probably almost a month ago, maybe, three weeks ago, we, we actually have the director, one of the directors from the budget office actually goes over to special ed one day a week and spends with the fiscal staff in special education and, and does a review of their budget, does a review of programs, number of students that are in MPA, MPS, what do the invoices look like, you know, ages of students, just very detailed information and working with them very closely so that we can be on top of that. So that's one example of what's been put in place. I talked a little bit about the debrief, what went well, what didn't go well, and how we can do a better job next time around. And our next time around is right around the corner, first interim. And Ms. Chen has already started with her staff on first interim. And we have already started our work on the fiscal stabilization update. So I think that was all the questions, but please, if there's anything, do you want to add something?
One thing
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. And one thing I would like to add to the swing of the ending fund the balance. And part of it is one-time money and a part of it is such as fair market value, I call it a paper entry, or on behalf of the STIRS, on behalf of the contribution. And those are paper entry and 6 million belongs to the STIRS on behalf and of the contribution from the state. And 6 million belongs to the fair market of value adjustments for the investments. And those are the one-time and a paper entry. Those are not linked with our actual cash you can spend. So you can see it at the bottom line and of the ending fund the balance also is a reserve as well. And another part is the prior adjustments and for 2223 year that was carrying over and to the 2324 year. Yeah, those are just some one-time, you know, I would like to point out, you know, part of the swing.
Thank you. Okay, so I had Commissioner Lam and then Commissioner Fisher.
Just a follow-up question, and perhaps it might be something that you bring colleagues to. My, my follow-up question was specifically around because the gap has been more, you know, unanticipated of that gap. And so what educational services may not have been provided, right? Or do we know, like, so what analysis has occurred to be able to understand? We've talked a lot about the importance around intersectional work between the fiscal and budget teams and educational services. And just want to see if you had any thoughts there as you're looking forward for the 25, 2425 process to ensuring that that educational services gap doesn't continue to be at that high level and what was potentially lost for students.
So that is something probably we need to bring back to you. I am not aware, but that doesn't mean that there isn't something there. I'm new on the scene. And so that's probably something that we need to take a look at.
I would love to see that as well. So thank you, Commissioner Lam, for bringing that up. My clarifying question, I appreciated hearing that you're going to be working on more collaboration with Department of Technology, Special Education. When, when Ms. Bear was here in September, doing the, giving us a report out on what we had, thanks to President Alexander, who had asked about, you know, digging in a little bit more to some of our staffing issues. One of the issues that she raised was silos. And, and I think you touched on that a little bit very diplomatically in your response. And so what do you need from the leadership team and from us as a board of education to improve that collaboration and communication? How do we, is there anything we can do to help you? And I love that you said work smarter, not harder. Are there tools that are needed from us or that, anything that we can do to empower without stepping into micromanagement from a board governance? What can we do or anything we should direct the leadership team to help make your job easier in a way that doesn't step into micromanagement and stays in board governance?
I think you already have the answer. No, I, I think it's, it's patience, allowing us the flexibility to do the work that we need to do. And yeah, I think at this point, it's patience because it is, as we all know, it has been decades, right? And it's not going to happen overnight. I think I was asked that question by someone and I said it's going to take probably a good two to three years. We know that we are We know that we are in the middle of an ERP implementation and it's going well. And we want to continue that for that to go well. But it is, it is a lot of work. And so, yeah, patience.
Does your team have, just last follow-up, does your team have the capacity? Do you have the staff you need to do the work or is there anything we need to do to support that?
At this point, we do. And we do have consultants that are in helping us with that ERP implementation and they're amazing. And also, the ERP company as well is helping us with that. So, and we get updates every single week telling us whether we're on track or not. And sometimes during the week, we get notifications, you're not on track, we missed this deadline. So, yeah, they're working really well with us. They're, they're being very patient as well.
And then, you did, you did help with, you know, the, the collaboration with the city. Can you speak to the request you made that they're following up around a desk audit? Because, so explain what that is and why that's important considering what we've talked about in terms of our systems and processes right now.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that. And so, we've requested for the city to collaborate with us to do a desk audit. We've already established, that needs to just go over to them now. We've established the format and the questions that will be asked, but it's for the budget, accounting, payroll, procurement, and technology offices at this time. And so, what that means is they will actually go to each of the employees in that, in those departments and ask questions. And it's going to provide us those data points that we need specifically as we are looking at reorganizing with the pulling apart, so to speak, and putting that wall, the district versus the county. So, that is something that's going to be really helpful for us. Thank you for that question.
Commissioner Lamb, did you want to, did you have a follow-up for the CDE advisors as well, experts?
I believe Pam is on the line.
I think Gally and, I heard he and Pam are available.
So, I had a question for state advisors, experts, the classification. Like to hear from you all around now given this latest information around the un-audited actuals and that, you know, we're looking at more general fund balances. I'm curious to hear you all's insight and analysis around what those, what implications are there, given that, you know, around the deficit spending and overall risk level? If you could just speak to that and how this report does or does not, you know, influence the current position, financial position of the district?
I, I can respond and Pam will jump in. First of all, I really want to thank Dr. Huntun, Ms. Chan, for an excellent presentation and addressing, by the way, many of the issues that we've brought up for a time. So, I'm going to divert for just a second in regard to the county office split of functions. Those of you that have been here for a while, Pam and I have been talking about the value of doing that and having separation between county office, even though you have your oversight from CDE, to have an internal oversight on your budget, your LCAP, and also to take what are normally county office expenditures for IT, for technology, and for special education. Those are all important things and ultimately, they may affect this number. The, the problem with ending balances is there are a gross number and not bad, not good, but a large number that has a lot of details in it. So, it's very hard to draw conclusions. I mean, to some extent, you would expect that given the numbers of jobs that you closed out from being vacant last year, as well as even though the hiring freeze came late in the year, the district was more conservative about staffing. So, some things probably positive, and I, you notice, I deliberately said probably because we don't know until we get into the very details of it. Some of the ending balances are part of leftover restricted funds. I think you even have some SER funds that are left as well as some of the other, I always get the, the learning, the learning funds, learning recovery funds. So, the answer, the quick answer is it really does not affect the fiscal health of the district at this point. Keep in mind that the differences in the ending balances are less than the amount of structural deficit you have to recover. And the structural deficit is clearly tied to ongoing expenditures where many of these are not. As, as pointed out, for example, the, the paper value of certain investments, I mean, of certain, like your STRS funds, your interest payments vary from year to year, but you can't bank on getting a certain amount of interest. You project it, but that's not going to solve your deficit problem. So, the, the hard answer and the quick answer is you still have the difficult work to do. Staff is in the process of really redoing the fiscal stabilization plan that was done for the budget because things have changed, positions have changed, you did shift to or moving to a centralized staffing model. So, I want to be clear and unequivocal, it does not change the amount of work you have to do with your structural deficit.
I'd just like to add that your ending balance, it's, I mean, it looks great. You've got $68 million more in your unrestricted ending balance, but in reality, some of that is going to help offset increases to your 24, 25 budget that you've just had to add. There was about 30 million. And then, on top of that, some of the money needed to be set aside for the implementation of the new ERP and some other different items that are coming on to your, I shouldn't say on to your 24, 25 budget now. But the one thing that I will point out is that I think that the piece missing in putting forward your first interims, your second interims, even your estimated actuals, is that staff really hasn't had the ability or education, I would say, to monitor a lot of things that are happening within your budget and make projections accurately. And that this year end, I think has provided them a great source to be able to go back and look and see, okay, why was our revenue higher here? Why were our expenditures lower? And then, those are the things now that they can take forward and look at your 24, 25 budget and your multi-year projection to see if those same things are happening moving forward. So, say for instance, on your interest, you had $15 million more that came in in interest earnings. That's something that should be monitored on a monthly basis. And then, so really, by, I would say, your third quarter, you should have an idea of how much more interest you're going to get. So, those are the kind of things that is, they're adjusted on each of your financial reports. You're going to see that ending balance shifting, you know, here and there, but by the time you hit your estimated actuals, and I think that's when you're talking about, you know, trying to level out that swing so that instead of having 30 million, 40 million, 50 million dollars left at the end of the year that you weren't anticipating, it should be much closer than that, within probably five to 10 million dollars. So, that's going to be kind of the goal moving forward is to make sure that all that monitoring and the projections are adjusted as they need to be throughout the year so that you're not hit with this at un-audited actuals.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Kim has a follow-up.
Yeah, that, so I have a question around that practice internally. So, it's my understanding that principals in San Francisco Unified work with their EDs of their lead cohorts where they sit down shoulder to shoulder and go line by line on the implications of budget changes that happen for school sites. Is there a similar practice or expectation that happens at central office where central office budget managers sit down with budget services shoulder to shoulder to go line item by line item to talk about the implications of changes that are happening by budget? I think that was like one of the, the, stepping into this staff world, board world, one of the, the kind of questions that I had on the table was what does that process look like? What are the expectations around budget managers at central office doing that? And because I know a similar expectation exists between school principals and their lead staff.
And budget and adoption is, happened July 1st. It's a year-round adjustments. So, the staff from budget department work closely, you know, with the different departments and the school sites. And the, if the, for example, if a school sites, you know, they receive the new funding or coming and the student success fund or other funds and coming federal and the state, and then they are going to have the conversation and make the plan and then the budget is going to be loaded, you know, throughout the year. And so, that's the interim report we are going to update, you know, of the budget change, including the personnel and of the federal, state and the local funding coming. And then, we are going to adjust accordingly throughout the year.
Yeah. Just to clarify, I think I, I think I have a better understanding of how site principals work with their lead EDs. I think my question is around central office budgets and whether that practice exists and that expectation exists for central office budget managers.
Well, and not to put too fine a point on it, but we just had a massive failure in special ed around this very issue. So, I don't think, I mean, like, something's not working.
Well, let me, no, let me clear. And, and it, I mean, I think when, you know, similar to schools, departments get a budget and they need to plan their budget and submit it and then it gets reviewed by district leadership. The, and when the, so this past year, we already had said central office was going to be reduced by certain number of positions and, you know, administrative as well as TOSSAs. And so, that was part of the budgeting process and that was all, all reviewed. And here's the difference, and this is the breakdown we already identified, right? When, you know, when a, another, if another department submits a budget that goes over what was allocated, there's back and forth. There might be what Jackie said, well, there's this grant or, or something, but it needs to be then adjusted accordingly. And we did go through that, that process last year. We went through that process with special education, but the adjusted accordingly did not happen accordingly well. That's the part we, we highlighted that, you know, whereas you could say like, you know, office superintendent, we submit a budget or, you know, research planning and accountability submits, but you know what, you, you know, we need to, this is too much, we need to pull back. And like RPA is a good example, they have different grants. I know there was some, some talking about what would happen with special education. We went through, you know, the, the issue that there are things that couldn't be, couldn't have been pulled back on, that we pulled back on that, you know, that that's what we need to, that's why we're having the assessment to make sure like that process doesn't, doesn't happen again. But generally, yes, schools, departments also get budgets like schools. They have the allocation, you know, targeted and then they're, they submit it and then there is, you know, feedback if it's over budget or if there's questions that, that we have.
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you for phrasing it the way you did, Commissioner Kim, because I think that really gets to the organizational infrastructure question that I was asking earlier, right? Because when it comes to cutting special education and going back to the compliance issues we discussed earlier, like, we have maintenance of effort requirements. You know, we can't just cut special education. It's written in ed code that unless we can justify, we have to come up with the same budget year over year over year. And particularly when we have one group saying, hey, we need an increased budget because we have more students requiring services or we have more services written into legally binding documents that are IEPs. So, this is where the, the organizational structure and the compliance mandates and all of this actually comes together to make sure, and to Commissioner Lamb's question earlier about money we didn't spend that meant that students didn't get services, all that intersects right here in special education. And so, this is where I go back to that question about organizational structure, infrastructure, capacity. So, you can frame it in any number of ways, but I am really looking forward to channeling Dr. Conna here, shining the spotlight on this, not breaking it apart with a hammer, but shining the spotlight and making sure that we really are understanding what went wrong and what we need to do better for our kids next year and this year.
Yeah. And I mean, I think just to, to build on that, I think the board has been really clear and I hope, I think you all know this as staff, that, you know, we obviously have to balance our budget. That is our first priority. But in order to do that, we need to fix these fiscal and operational systems because we can't, like, if people aren't communicating and we don't know that we actually need 30 million more dollars of special education teachers in Paris, we can't, we don't have the information we need to be, to be able to actually balance the budget. So, I think that's the line of, that's where this line of questioning is coming from. Is Dr. Huntun, did you want to?
Yeah, I, I was going to add to that, you know, as we are thinking about our budget development for this next year, and we will be utilizing our new ERP system to budget in that system for next year. And so, part of that process would be meeting with sites, meeting with departments to make sure. And as part of that, it's an edification to build capacity to empower them in terms of how they read their reports and they have access to those reports every day and they can look at that. But when should they be looking at it? What they, what should they be looking at? What are the inhibitors for trying to get something through? So, there's lots of legs to that.
And I, I very much appreciate that. I think in some ways, adoption of a new ERP system may be a forcing mechanism for us to have these conversations. I think my concern is in the one to two-year delay that we were talking about in the implementation of that ERP, because we do have systems and routines right now that we have to follow with go fast and empower and perky. And the reality is like, frankly, I am a little concerned that the internal expectations around budget managers meeting with budget services, I mean, I will say just from my own experience, having been on staff, was not strong. And so, I think the concern that I have is that in this time right now, where we're transitioning towards an ERP system that will force us to sit down and shoulder to shoulder and have these conversations, how confident are we that those conversations are happening between budget services and any program staff or any department centrally? Because I think sped is just one example of this, but another example I would give is the fact that we ended up with somehow one person at central office who manages our math work, like, the, the numbers aren't numbering and the proportions aren't really there. So, I think that's my concern is, is in the, in the delay that it takes to actually fully adopt and implement ERP, that while it's fantastic that that may be a forcing mechanism, there are times right now where we need to focus on, on our controls now.
And, and to, and to your point, Commissioner Kim, it's not, I think there's a technical piece which the ERP system will address, but there's also this cultural organizational piece that's, that even if we have the best system in the world, people still need to be communicating, right? And there still needs to be discussions and back and forth. And I mean, one of the, you know, one of the reasons I'm really excited that the, the city stabilization team includes Carl Cone, the former Long Beach superintendent, is that Long Beach is a really highly effective district. And one of the systems, I was talking a couple of years ago with Chris Steinhouser, who succeeded Carl Cone in Long Beach, and was talking about how their budget office had every, multiple times a year, they had to go out and meet with principals and meet with department heads to have that conversations. There actually was a, what you're describing was, was, was a systems process, but it was a relational systems process where everybody was expected to have those conversations. I don't know whether it was three times a year or something, review the budget, how is your spending? They would look at budget to actuals together, they would project their budget for next year for a department, for a school. And so, those were a, a set of cultural practices that obviously depended on good systems, but they also were, weren't just about systems, but were actually about people. Do you want to?
Dr. Huntun, I'll just give you the opportunity around change management. We've talked a bit about that in the ad hoc committee in the fiscal operational hall that goes beyond the dashboard and, and you certainly have jumped into the deep ocean with us here in SFU, SD. Really appreciate your leadership. Just anything that you want to share now around this change management piece. I think that my colleagues are kind of, you know, getting towards, there's the technical pieces, but then there's also the change management.
It's really about relationships and building those relationships. And I think that the more that we can build the relationships, it will help the silos to break down. But I am a true believer in training as part of those relationships, is training staff to be able to use the tools that are available to them so that it empowers them, but at the same time, know that they have that safety net there and that they can, you know, that you have a cadence in, in, in process so that you can utilize that in addition to those relationships when you need that 911 call to, to, for the help. Yeah.
Great. All right. So, if it's okay with my colleagues, I think we'll move on. Seeing nods, great. But we have to vote on this first. We have to vote to accept the, the un-audited actuals. So, let's do a roll call vote. Mr. Seale?
Thank you, President Alexander. Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Weisman Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Semper ice.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item G, the public hearing on and approval of the resolution regarding the sufficiency of textbooks in the the resolution regarding the sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials as required by ed code section six zero one one nine. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Other any comments, Superintendent Wayne? Do you have one to say anything about this?
Yeah, this is a required public hearing that happens annually regarding providing, you know, the sufficiency of instructional materials. And, you know, there's a kind of a broader definition of instructional materials. And so we typically report having met it, but we'll say please this year that we have new instructional materials for our elementary literacy curriculum and that you heard in our math last update how we're piloting math curriculum. So definitely bringing more robust materials. But this is just, again, a required public hearing on this topic.
Are there any comments or questions from board members? Yes?
I do have one. This is carrying from a conversation that took place at the last board meeting about the focus on instructional materials and content at high school level. And recognizing that in K eight, we have some concrete kind of strategies in place for curriculum implementation and adoption. But it was, I had asked this question around just then, what is the, what is the conversation look like at the high school level around our instructional work? Specifically around content and our curriculum implementation. I see in this document here that we do name explicitly that high schools that we are due for adoption of materials for high school. And so frankly, I think, and I said this last time, too. Frankly, I think this is more of a conversation for the board to have around what our priorities are and our guidance is to the superintendent and the district around the need to ensure that our instructional materials and our work around content knowledge development at the high school level is just as important as K eight. And and just what that means then in terms of the need to shift resources internally to make sure that that happens. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that and recognize that in even in this resolution, it names that high school has some, has has an opportunity here around our our core curriculum adoption.
And thank you, Commissioner Kim, to build on that. Looking at the age of some of these curriculums, you know, like some of them, I saw one in here that was, oh, copyright nineteen ninety four, right? That's a older than all of my children, who, three of them have already graduated from S F U S D, right? And so I have questions about what our schedule is for new curriculum adoption as well as what are the impacts on outcomes? I mean, we we list the schools here, but we don't list the number of students impacted. We don't list the impact on their outcomes and when we are supposed to be student outcomes focused. I'm I would like to see a little bit more detail here about understanding and when were materials delivered, you know, with what's the lag time between reporting and I just think there's a if we're, if we're going to implement this kind of report with intentionality and and make it student outcomes driven and not just checking a compliance box, I would like to see a little bit more work here on how how this impacted kids, you know, just, just, I have a lot more questions about more details.
Thank you. Did you want to follow up on that?
No, I mean, I hear you. There is, there are some specific compliance aspects to this, but, I mean, and you did, you know, thank you for reinforcing what you shared last time, Commissioner Kim. I think our next I'm just looking at Dr. Aguilera Ford about thinking either in our next curriculum, you know, guardrail three, which is curriculum and instruction, or guardrail or goal three, which is college and career readiness. These might be opportunities to provide more detail of where we are with high school adoption.
All right, if there's no other comments, we're going to do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
No.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Wes Ben Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Six eyes.
All right, now we'll move on to item H, the consent calendar. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Superintendent Wayne, are there any items withdrawn or corrected?
No.
All right, then we will have a roll call vote on the consent calendar.
Thank you. Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Wes Ben Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you very much. All right, now we will move on to item J, board members' reports. Are there any reports from board members to, in terms of reports from membership organizations, advisory committee appointments, other or other reports? Commissioner Fisher, do you, did you want to?
Sure, happy to. I had the pleasure of attending the C C B A, the county, the the county school board, basically annual convention in Monterey in mid September. It was lovely, lovely to be there. And every time anyone heard I was from San Francisco Unified, there was sheer pleasure to see that someone from San Francisco County Office was finally reengaging. So that was great. There are a lot of folks who have offered lots of support for us as we move forward with understanding our county obligations and parsing out the difference between a C O E and an L E A, County Office of Ed and Local Education Agency. And we had a lot of really, there were a lot of great presentations focused specifically on charter schools because charter school oversight and reauthorization is changing, which doesn't have as much impact on us. But there were also a lot of great sessions on budget, county budget. And the the terms that you call county budget are a little bit different. But I think overall this will be changing moving forward. The C C B E is being rolled into C S B A, County School Board, or California School Board Association. And so there will be one delegate region for county boards. And so moving forward, it will be more aligned. And I think there there is a lot of great information there to to leverage. And I would encourage more of us to learn and I'm happy to share more. We have a whole trustee manual that they shared with us that they're working on making digital so that we can all better understand our county obligations. So more to come as I attend more meetings, but thank you.
Thank you. Are there other reports from board members? I think Dr. Wayne has a report.
No, just want to appreciate you attending. And similarly, Dr. Hantoon went to a county business office meeting. And it is noted that when San Francisco shows up, because as we just talked earlier, it's an area where we haven't, you know, had that much involvement with other county offices, our own structure. And and also just had a very productive meeting with and with our special education CAC last night. So I had an opportunity to really hear their questions and concerns. And we did a follow up, we have a follow up meeting scheduled in November.
Commissioner Bogus?
Sorry, just wanted to ask a clarifying question. I know we finished the vote on the public hearing already. Did we call for public comment on that? And I missed it. I was just curious if we had offered that up. Someone also made a mention of it in the Zoom questions. I was just curious if that's something that we had done.
It was not in my script.
Should we close the hearing?
It was not in my script. I apologize. So.
Was there any, were there any cards submitted for the public hearing?
No, we did all the public comment at the beginning and there weren't any for that.
Well, I think above and beyond that, our compliance mandates are to separate our L E A meetings and our C O E meetings. So that's, I think, one of the other issues that we might have to address here.
This is on the sufficiency of the instructional materials, public hearing, correct?
But for the county budget, was there anything that we had to separate out in approving the county budget versus the L E A budget? Or were we able to approve them both as the same?
Yeah, so the county, the unaudited actuals was fine. This is, that's, that can be approved together. They get, you know, there are two separate reports you got, you have attached. But and then so for this one, yes, so we didn't have any public hearing, cards for the public hearing, correct?
Correct, there were none.
Yeah, so if I'm looking at our interim general counsel, right? We can't just call for any public comments for the public hearing. What do you recommend?
I recommend that you basically make a call for a public comment. And if there's any public comment, then receive those public comments right now.
Specific to the public hearing?
Specific to the public hearing on the sufficiency of the instructional materials.
Okay, so we need to have public comment separately for the public hearing. Okay, sorry, that was not in my, in my script. So are there, is there anyone, apologies to the public? Is there anyone in, either in person or online, who would like to make public comment on item G one, the public hearing on an approval of resolution regarding the sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials as required by ed code section six zero one one nine? If so, please raise your hand or approach the podium.
I am seeing one hand raised, so two hands. Vanessa?
Thank you. I appreciate Commissioner Bogus for bringing up my comment. Thank you for allowing the public comments for hearing. I wanted to just add, someone on the board mentioned this, but high school curriculum in terms of textbooks and maybe even, you know, elementary. I think it's really important that the district work with the San Francisco Public Library and start or expand a partnership around audio books. You know, hard textbooks are coming, are becoming a bit outdated. I think it's very important that young people have access to audio books wherever they can by their, you know, electronics. So please, you know, we look at your resolution and make sure that it's kind of like meeting digital age. Thanks.
Thank you. Manning T?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Tofar Manning. I'm a teacher in S F U S D. I've subbed in many of the schools for many years and I've been on staff at a few schools. Currently, I'm at M L K, but I'm speaking to my experience as a teacher, substitute teacher and current teacher. I really just are going to press for you guys to really think about how you're securing resources and adopting text and making sure that we have adequate things because it really makes a difference in planning and preparation. And I know Central Office works really hard on trying to figure out how to adopt text, but we have to I just want to make sure that as a board, you're constantly ahead of it, making sure that the the money is there and ready for us to get what we need so that we can do the best job that we can. Also, one other thing is that if you consider having text enough for text to be at the school, but also for families to have at home to access to support their students and not having to have the students go back and forth. So considering that and not having it all only be also online things so that we can reduce the amount of screen time students have. Thank you.
Thank you. That does conclude virtual public comment for the hearing.
Thank you. Commissioners, in light of the public comment, is anyone, would anyone like to reconsider that motion and vote that we've already taken? We don't need to. It's if anyone feels like the, it's necessary. Okay. Great, well, then it will stand. And again, apologies for that little mix up. I'm glad we figured it out. Thank you, Commissioner Bogus. And with that, this meeting is adjourned at nine twenty P M.